January 25th, 2022, meeting of the Christiansburg Town Council to order. We're going to observe a minute of silence. And I hope that some of you will keep the family of Roger Howell, who was one of our Public Works employees, 15 years, that passed away last week. I hope you'll keep he and his family in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Thank you. Going to ask us to stand for the pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to ask Councilman Jenkins if he can lead us in the pledge.
I apply to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're trying to get us through this thing pretty quick. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion that we remove the approved minutes from January 11th outside of the 10 minute.
Okay.
Got a couple of changes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Wilson, you got anything?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion that we table consent agenda item C, resolution for adoption of emergency operations plan. There's some administrative things that Chief Hanks and I want to do to it.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Did we vote on both of those?
I think we need to vote on one first.
Well, that's what I meant.
Let's vote on it separately.
The first one is to table the minutes.
Yes.
Give me separate the minutes.
Yeah.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, that's six oh. And now I'm separating the minutes from the consent agenda. Go.
No, no.
Consent. Mr. Wilson's motion to table C.
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is also six oh. In the public hearings, we have a fiscal year 2122 budget amendment number seven. Is there anyone here to address this item? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearings. Under the consent agenda, we have the monthly bill list and a reschedule of a town public hearing for February the 8th, 2022 for resolution, disposition of town-owned lot for the intersection of West Street and Johnson Street, tax parcel 497, day 12, section 3, day 16A. Parcelity number is 070451.
I make a motion to approve consent agenda items B and D.
Okay. Second. A motion in a second. Any discussions?
Chair. On the bills, you had a couple of questions.
Oh, yes. Thank you, I was thinking about the other minutes.
No worries.
So, under the, is there anything that we can do as far as the $5,400 charge that Norfolk Southern charges us for?
Oh, okay, I was talking about those.
The no-blow zone or the quiet zone? Is there anything we can do for that?
That is their application fee.
What?
That is their application fee for the quiet zone, and they will not consider the application without it.
So is that application done every year?
No, it's not. It's a one-time fee.
Because we just did that years ago, didn't we? They haven't been blowing it for a while.
The Cambria, but this is the quiet zone on Crispin Mill.
Okay.
Oh, this is for Crispin Mill.
One-time charge.
One-time. It's an application fee, is what you call it.
So with that, is there any other additional charges that there will be asking the town to pay for?
I don't anticipate any others. To be honest, I didn't really anticipate that kind of application fee for that. But I don't anticipate anything beyond the application itself.
Okay. And then there was another charge for... There was for the land. Under Carter Bank and Trust, there was an interest charge of $8,988. What land are we talking about for one loan of $856,000? Can you tell me?
About a total loan of $856,000?
Yeah.
Okay. Is that a quarterly interest payment or annual?
It's semi-annual.
Semi-annual.
Is this for what piece of land?
It doesn't necessarily mean a piece of land.
If it's a loan, it's probably for the aquatics now. You know, outstanding loans, that's really, I think, about all we've got.
I guess my question was because it says land.
It says loan.
It might be titled that, but I don't think it's really for, I don't think it's for land purposes.
Says PD.
On PD and land loan balance, okay. Hey, does say land.
What, the PD, the police department? For the improvement we did down there?
I guess it could be. Although it's the opposite, I thought we paid that off.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Headline?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Aye.
That is six oh. With Shaw Walter under the minutes, you had some questions or corrections or statements?
Yeah, I would like to make a correction to, and unfortunately, I don't have a page number here, but it's item eight. It's when we voted on the town council reaffirmation of town attorney engagement policy. The minutes actually reflect that we voted on the hourly rate of the attorney, and we didn't do that. This was, I watched the video as well. It seemed confusing because that's how the conversation started. There was a motion, there was a second, but then it switched during the motion and voting period to just the engagement policy for council and the attorney. So if you go by the minutes, we shouldn't even have our agenda on here tonight for the rate, but we did not vote on that.
We did not, though we tabled the rate, because I remember asking for it.
But the minutes reflect that, explaining the increases would be for additional $5 an hour, but it really doesn't go into anything about the true vote, which was the council attorney engagement policy, which we discussed briefly.
We did discuss that last week.
Yeah, and that's what we voted on, but I think the minutes sort of reflect that, or appear as if we voted on the fee increase for the attorneys.
Okay.
And the other item, which I cannot find, but it had to do with the code of ethics, and Ms. Hicks, of course, you know, mentioned some items that she felt sort of ostracized by council. And at the end, of course, I disagreed with it, and I liked the minutes to reflect that I did disagree with that.
That's under section seven of the...
Is it one up from that? Yes, it is one up from that. No wonder I missed it.
That's on the reaffirmation of code of ethics?
Yep. So I'll make that in the form of a motion.
So you want to make two corrections?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a second?
I'll look a second then.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second. Any other discussions?
Would you like to also make a correction as far as like the billing part? I know that you brought it under the bills, but there was a charge in there because you work for Virginia Tech and the department you work for. It's, remind me again?
The bursar's office?
Yes. And under the bills, there is a charge in there for Virginia Tech versus office for the payment of those people that were trying to do some stuff for us. I know it's not a big bill, but I think you should have excluded yourself from the bills.
From the last meeting?
From the last meeting, yes.
Well, I can't change my vote on that. I'm just changing the minutes here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make sure I pay a little bit more attention to that, but most bills that come from Virginia Tech are the athletics. Even if it's through the main part of the university, through the bursar's office, I'm not affiliated with it.
I think that payment to tech is for interns based upon...
Pull out my ass, Randy, I'm sorry. But I love you.
I think the payment to tech is for intern program at Virginia Tech is what it's for.
Yeah, but he didn't say that.
I'll pay more attention to it.
All right, very good. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Headline?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. We have no introductions and presentations tonight. I will open the floor to citizens' comments. If you have, please address to the chair and limit yourself to three minutes.
Paul Leitner, 160 Alexa Lane. Two questions. I heard there was some discussion about a quiet zone and a fee of $5,400. I don't know what that is. I live close to Crispin, I think I heard the Crispin Mill Road. What does that mean?
It's a train crossing there.
Okay, I know where that is.
And I think we have had discussion over that for a long time. And apparently, I mean, this is the first I've heard of us having to pay that application, but you know, Paul, if you don't want us to pay it, we'd be glad to let them blow the whistles.
No, I just didn't know what it was.
Yeah, that's...
So does that restrict?
Them from blowing whistles at that crossing.
Okay. Whistles, I don't even hear them anymore after the first day.
Randy, could you get some information out about that? It's been a while. I remember hearing it years ago. Like, is it annually that we do it, or?
No.
No, no. There, you may occasionally have to reaffirm a whistle ban zone, but I don't think there's really a fee or anything like that in regards to that. What we're actually applying for is basically the whistle ban at the Crispin Mill Crossing, like as an effect at the Cambria Crossing. We had, I guess, site distance issues there with the type of crossing we had, so we made upgrades to the crossing over the last year. And because of that, we are eligible to apply for the quiet zone.
No.
Basically what they call it. I was a little surprised by their application fee for Norfolk Southern. Like I say, I thought it was a little bit steep, but it is, as I understand it, just a one-time application.
But I guess from my understanding, even though it was a whistle thing or whatever, Norfolk Southern can probably impose a whole bunch of other restrictions on us, that we may have to provide metal rails and all kinds of stuff, maybe lights and even of that. You know, is that possible? Because, I mean, you were mentioning a little bit ago that no, but I kind of have to personally disagree with that. Do you think that, I'm going to ask you again, do you think that there is going to be additional charges?
I think we probably are at their mercy to some degree in terms of the approval, because it is strictly a Norfolk Southern approval. But as I understand it, the upgrades that we made should be sufficient.
We made several improvements out at that crossing a couple of, three or four years ago. Several, what's this, a couple of million dollars worth, or?
I don't know if it was two million, but it was definitely over a million.
It straightened it out and widened and make it so that, I think one of the problems we had before was that the gates on one side and the other did not cover all the way across both lanes, and we've since remedied that.
That was an issue, and we did have a couple of vehicles struck there.
But I also feel like that there is also a curve that takes place, and one of the biggest things to you for, even though we applied for this, you actually think that even we have a chance that they may get rid of it.
I certainly think so. I don't think we'd be applying if not.
I'm sorry, I'm taking your time.
I hope you're keeping track of this, Mayor Barber.
You've got 12 seconds left.
Sorry.
Use them once.
Like the mayor said, arms are extended, and I think that was kind of a needed improvement, and the curve was straightened a little bit. I know it's still a little bit of a sharp curve, but that's part of the reason we acquired land, and it's slightly improved.
It's better than it was?
Yes.
I use that intersection, that crossing a lot. And finally, Norfolk Southern, it seemed like it took them for an awful long time, but they finally smoothed that over a little bit to the crossing. The crossing was real rough. Just FYI, I like train whistles. I don't, I didn't complain, I won't complain.
There's several people that live right up above that complained violently.
Yeah. I have another question. This is for Ms. Hicks. In the past, I believe you have been strongly opposed to closed meetings. And since you've been on council now for some time, has your opinion of closed meetings changed at all? Or how do you feel about closed meetings?
I am glad you were asking questions. I haven't changed my opinion about them. I think there is occasions that you really, really need to have them. And in this instance, like for example, today is a perfect example of them. We're dealing with a case that can actually cause a town millions, or maybe not, you know? And so do we want to have a lot of this information on the public possibly of not? And so I think there are circumstances that they're definitely necessary, how there is other circumstances that obviously they shouldn't be there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Anyone else to address council? I thought I saw you peeking in the door, Chris.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Ruby Street. I hadn't actually planned on, but I heard about the force, the double crossing. There's some stuff that I don't think that all of you all understand about it. I don't think Randy understands it, but basically, we're a no-blow crossing. Norfolk Southern doesn't approve anything. As a matter of fact, there is not a single Class 1 railroad in the United States of America that thinks it's a good idea to have a no-blow crossing. They consider it a safety issue. There have been laws passed that allow them. Cambria is grandfathered in. It would not meet the criteria today had it not been grandfathered to be a no-blow crossing. So there have to be improvements made. It's the Federal Railroad Administration who approves no-blow crossings. And it is done by, there is a national number. And there's actually an app you have to go to on the FRA's website. You have to put in traffic patterns, traffic crossing, the number of vehicles, all that. And it takes a whole national average and factors in accidents. If you have an accident in a no-blow crossing, you can find yourself having a blow crossing right after it. It's all average, it changes every year. And so you may have a no-blow crossing this year, and next year the numbers may be above that number instead of below it. Well, they've got a blow crossing. I mean, that's how it works. It's, the railroad doesn't approve it.
Well, why are they billing us?
Huh?
Why is Norfolk Southern billing us if they don't approve it?
That you would have to ask Norfolk Southern. But, I mean, if you look at the Class 1 railroads like UP and them, and look up no-blow crossings in UP, there's a big thing on there. And every Class 1 railroad is the same thing. It says, "We don't believe in them. We believe they're a safety issue, but we realize that the federal government has passed laws that allow them." And, you know, and at least with UPS on theirs, when I read it, it basically says that you're buying a crossing. If the gate's malfunction, you're fixing it. If there's something wrong with, you know, something happened, because there's different things, they put at different crossings to be no-blow. I mean, they have like little horns that sometimes blow. It basically, you know, you're buying it. If it breaks, you're fixing it. But, I mean, I don't know why they're, it could have been for improvements that they did. I mean, I really don't know what the, why they're billing it.
That's just for the permit to be a no-whistle zone.
But I know that there's, because I've looked at the app, there's an app at the FRA website that you have to go in and you have to plug in numbers, the number of vehicles that cross that crossing every day, and I think there's stuff about the grade, everything else. And it spits out a number. And that number has to fall below the national number for a no-blow crossing, or it's a blow crossing, and there's nothing you can do about it. But that's all I had. Thanks.
Thanks, Chris.
How do the engineers know not to blow?
They're told not to blow. They'll take the whistle boards down. If you look at the railroad tracks, you'll see little boards with a W on it that are spaced a certain distance from the crossing. They take those down and put out a memo that says it's now a no-blow crossing. For instance, Abingdon is a no-blow crossing from 11:00 PM to 10:00 or 11:00 to 6:00 AM. That's an option, you know. It's only during the night hours, during the day they blow them, which I believe doing that lowers that score somewhat, because it's only during the middle of the night, you know, when people are sleeping. Eight o'clock in the morning, you know, most people don't care if you, they hear a railroad horn. I mean, I don't, but they put out a memo that says this is now a no-blow crossing.
You pass by Crispin Mill Road every day, or?
I've almost hit cars. I've seen a car flip over there.
But do you think, you know, you said something about a figure that said because of the grade, do you think that grade that's coming down from Crispin Mill to the...
Christiansburg.
Would that be a...
Christiansburg, right up here at Marymount, or, I mean, Cambria, is the crest of the hill. So by the time you get down there, you're going down a pretty steep grade. I know that when you're going west on the right-hand side before you get there, you can't even see the whistle board from the crossing going west, because there's a huge outcropping of rock that provides, when I, when you come around that rock outcropping, it's about, depending on the speed, between two and three seconds before you're on that crossing. And the speed through there is 30 miles an hour.
But I think my question to you was the grade of Crispin Mill Road, you know?
No, it's the grade of the railroad tracks.
Okay, that's, that was, okay, thank you.
The grade of the tracks.
Okay, thanks, Chris.
Because usually going across the railroad tracks, wherever you cross it, it's level. I mean, fairly level anyway.
Hopefully, okay, thanks.
Randy, when we apply for that application, do we make a, the application for the 24 hours no-blow zone? Or like, is that only for four hours?
I have to ask engineering and all of us. I don't know that they've submitted the application yet. I think they needed payment before they did consider. I'll check on that, see how the application is.
I was interested to hear what Chris talks about, that that increases the rates of us not being able to have the no-blow zone if you have less.
I do know things like grades make a difference. You know, like I say, things like having the arms basically go, extend to full length is a requirement. There's kind of a lot of things that go in.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Street Committee, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Hockett.
Yes, sir. I have asked Mr. Ward to assist with this one, because it has a lot of easements, and I'm afraid I might get confused and myself too.
It's not an easy job, is it?
It's not easy. No, it's not.
So the first plot is a plat showing right-of-way dedication and public utility easements for Magnolia Point on tax map number 434-A-84 located on Pepper's Ferry Road Northwest and New Village Drive Northwest.
Thank you, good evening. The first plat that the street committee reviewed this evening was for Magnolia Point. Council members that have been on for a little while may remember there was a rezoning and a conditional use permit for some additional townhomes, but mainly for apartment buildings. Magnolia Point is, they're proposing to build an apartment complex on the corner of Pepper's Ferry Road and New Village Drive. And the plat before you this evening provides for public utility easements as well as the right-of-way for Bozeman Trail, which is shown here. This is Pepper's Ferry Road. This is, this will be the dedication of Bozeman Trail. You may remember there was quite a bit of discussion of would this be two-way traffic? Would you be able to take left turns from here? The, this will be right in, right out only, but this would be a new street that would connect up to the existing townhome development. So I'll go to the next plat here. So this is just to the north. So this is a match line sheet too. So we were just coming from, as you continue up Bozeman Trail, there's existing road here in the townhome development that comes back out to New Village Drive. So what's being proposed today is the dedication of this new road as well as the public utility easement. And also, as part of the site plan process, the developer will be building a right turn here off of New Village Drive in order to allow for cars that are stacking here that may be turning left onto Pepper's Ferry Road, which is a pretty common turning pattern, would allow them to get over into the right-hand lane and to go right if they're going out towards, you know, towards the arsenal or towards Radford.
All right. Street Committee did not have any objections to this plat, and recommends approving as a form of a motion.
Do I have a second?
I can say.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, that is six oh. Plat of subdivision of Campbelltown Green on the Depot Street Northeast and Harless Street Northeast, creating 10 townhome lots and two open space lots.
Again, this is really stems from an action that council had taken previously. It was a rezoning from general commercial to R3 multifamily, and the developer is proposing to build 10 townhome lots on the corner of Depot Street and Harless Street. Rosa Peters Park is right across the street here with Depot Park, a little further to the, to the south. And there would be seven lots that would front off of Harless Street. There would be two entrances into parking areas, and then there would be three additional townhomes that would, that would front on Depot Street. And then there would also be two open space lots. This would be a stormwater pond down here, open space lot number one. And those would be owned and maintained by homeowners association.
Okay.
All right. The street committee makes a recommendation to approve the request. As a form of a motion.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I guess the only question is, just a sub reminder for me. This was a sidewalk, right?
That's the existing sidewalk, correct. That will be kept, correct.
They're not doing any repairs to it?
It would be, you know, no, I mean, as much as they will be able to keep the existing sidewalk, they would not be required to do any repairs. Unless it is damaged by the construction or where they're putting an entrance in, they would have to line up the new, you know, the entrance to make sure that... Yeah, I understand.
All right.
Madam, any further questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye. Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Shaw Walter?
Aye.
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Exhibit from record showing new public utility easements on tax map 406-2-10 on Midway Plaza Drive Northwest.
And this subdivision plat is actually a property that, that the council has seen before as, when it was a, another subdivision, when they vacated some lot lines about four or five months ago. And basically, the proposal here is an old standing site plan that was revised this past year for 46 townhomes. And basically, there would be three entrances from Midway Plaza Drive here, and this is on the corner of Corning Drive in the northern portion of town. And the, basically, this is one drive area, this is a second, this is a third. They'd be proposing to put townhomes on each side of the, these drives. And the drives would also be covered by easements, and that's what's before you this evening, is that there, there would be public utility easements dedicated on top of the parking areas that would allow for the utilities to be, to be built and to get dedicated to the town so that we can maintain them. There, there's also two utility, smaller utility easements proposed here and here as well, and then one along there.
Andrew, can you remind me where that was located?
Yes, so it is right across, very near Extreme Springs, near, near the Corning Plant. And so if you were to come out.
I remember.
Yeah, so if you come out Midway Plaza and, and come to, to North Franklin, you, the, the Liberty 711 is probably the best, yeah, the best visual marker.
And if the train, rail train, because the train was like behind it or on, no, it's actually on.
Yeah, right, you can actually see it's labeled here. The Norfolk Southern Railway Tunnel is right here. Yeah, so it, it's underground at that point.
That's probably, I think that was the last property part of the town under that side, right?
Correct, yeah, I mean, it, it does become county right after that.
That's the Norfolk limit, there's actually a couple of parcels on the west side of the railroad that are in payment, that used to be railroad driver later, which is made in the Norfolk side. Basically put the annex, the annex to the northern limits of the railroad.
Thank you.
All right. Street committee makes a motion to approve the plot.
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Aye.
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 Aye. That's six O, thank you. Like Andrew, discussion in action by mayor and town council, town attorney engagement agreement contract, I think we had it in our minutes last meeting. It is, is explained in your packet, I believe that Sands Anderson would, is requesting a, an increase of $5 an hour for their attorneys, their legal assistants, and somebody of...
Law clerks.
Law clerks, so.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the town attorney engagement agreement contract for the year 2022, 2023?
I think we did the contract itself already, so this was...
Yeah, so they are paying, they're paying.
The pay increase.
Yeah, so the pay increase is, is on this contract.
That's a question, okay, very good. Do I have a mo, a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Randy, so we decided a few years ago for our town attorneys and our auditor that we bid this out every five years, correct? So how long has Sands Anderson been with it?
About $200,000 worth.
So we've got another, we've got another three years on that? Okay. First of all, your rep, reputations, when you put a bid in for it, preceded you as a very good company. You guys weren't the most inexpensive hourly, but your reputation, and you were referred, at least by, we had an attorney here on council as well who thought, and I have no issue with the service that we've been provided, I would like to wait until we see how the budget figures in a few months, but I respect that they want this voted on tonight. I am going to vote no on it, but it has nothing to do with, with their performance that you've given the town. I would just like to...
This is for the first six months of the year, so in the next budget cycle, we'll be probably, probably, most likely looking at another increase, is that correct?
That was our proposal, was to do $5 January 1, another five, I guess July 1, with the idea that that would give you all opportunity to budget for it. We didn't want to spring it on you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion, right?
Yep.
Yes, we have a motion for a year, we had a discussion for six months. I personally feel like we should just go right ahead with it for the year, and then I put the motion for the year.
Well, but they haven't given us the dollar figure, they could...
It was $5.
So the contract as it's written says till now in July.
Yeah.
So we could come back in July again, so until we have that presentation or that request, I don't think we can approve ahead of time.
So I can change my motion to change it for the next six months, and then...
You can just, you can approve the request presented tonight, which is from now till July 1.
Okay, so I take the other one back.
I didn't understand, you're the other one, okay, so, but...
Because I said, I made a motion to make it for the year.
Yeah.
As is stated in there, but we want to make it for six months.
Well, that's a contract, request, that's, that's a request is for six months right now that we have in front of us.
I think you could approve it either way. I, I think you could approve it for a $5 increase now and a six-month increase, or a $5 increase six months from now, or you could simply approve a $5 increase now.
Oh, let's just approve it for the $5 for now, and then, well, I guess we'll put it back on the agenda in another six months.
If council would rather wait and just deal with the full $10 in July, that's fine with me, it's entirely up to you all what you prefer.
That's going to save us some money, so.
It's really up to the council. Again, I would rather wait to see how the figures start to look when we start preparing...
Okay, so I will withdraw my motion of the town attorney engagement agreement contract
for us to revisit this in the month of June, or July? June, right?
July.
July, okay, July 2020.
I'm sure we'll get that request during the budget cycle, but the new budget starts July 1, so.
So do I have to be specific as far as the date, or just say July?
Just motion, you just withdraw on your motion?
Yes.
Now, is there a motion to deny this action by the town at this point?
I'll make a motion to deny the action by the town at this point.
I'll second.
Okay, very good. Any discussion?
Is, is there any reason why we just can't table it?
That makes sense to me.
Well, I mean, because, I mean, my issue is, there's no performance issue here.
You know, we're just hard over $15 an hour, mile of life.
I think they've represented us very well, it's just, it's more of a fiscal overall picture for me, when, when we look, start to look at the budget, for us to, to make changes now, because I know things, things are going to be a little bit different this year.
What is the max amount that we have to put in there as far as...
I would, I would draw my second.
I would draw my motion and make a new motion that we table this.
And I'll second.
The motion to table this request, that is better than a flat no, isn't it?
Feels better to me.
At least we gave you a definite maybe. Okay, so any comments?
I really like the performance that we have received by Sands Anderson.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much, both of you.
You have done, you guys have presented, represented the town very well, in a very professional manner, so.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aha.
Aye.
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 That is six O, thank you. Resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2122 budget amendment number seven. It was explained last week. And I think the reason we're having to make this budget amendment is because it is 1% more than the, more than 1% of the budget, and the biggest portion of that is income that we're taking in and adding back to the budget, to correct nutshell?
Correct. It, it is making some adjustments for additional revenues that were projected received. We did have a reading of the budget last council meeting.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution for the adoption of FY 2021 2022 budget amendment number seven.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Aha.
Aye.
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 That's six O, we have a resolution to appropriate the funds approved for 2021 2022 budget amendment seven, and I think there was 48,000 and 7,000 and something, or 9,000, something like that, that she requested, is that correct?
That's correct, it should basically align with the budget amendment.
Okay. Yeah, it was discussed last week. Do I have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, to appropriate the funds for fiscal year 2021 2022 budget amendment number seven.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
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 That is six O. Staff reports, town manager?
Going to pass around, good. First sheet is College Street Stormwater Improvement Alternatives, and the second sheet, or actually the second, there's a couple of attached pages from our College Street, Drainage Supplemental Alternative Analysis. This is basically a revision to the document that was done this summer.
Just keep sliding them around, he'll get you, is that it? Do we have all of the copies out there?
It's pretty large.
Hey, this is the first one, then we got a second set coming there.
Okay. Basically, I'll just call your attention to the, the sheet that has College Street Stormwater Improvement Alternatives. This does reference a couple of, I guess, alternative 4A and another alternative 2A, and the reason I'm giving you these sheets, it's got a description of those alternatives. I'm just going to kind of basically run through this, there's a few options. One, obviously, would be potential to do nothing, which I don't think is really a desirable option, but it would be an option if the town were experiencing resistance from property owners in terms of need of easement for property acquisition. I know council said that they didn't really want to have to condemn property to help, try to help improve people's situations. Just option A, of course, would be potentially buying five properties and demolishing structures appearing to be most susceptible to flooding, basically eliminate that hazard to those homes. Could be eventually no other improvements with that. Risk would be that people may not want to relocate. Cost of that is approximately 900,000. Option B, would be buy, be buy five affected homes, demolish the homes, and build a pond. And that would involve relocating the driveway also for 78 College, 78 College Street, installing a large 36, 30 and 36-inch pipes upstream, and replacing 36-inch pipe downstream, because it's all piping, it's a place. Basically, the cost of that is 3.04 million. Option C would be complete design alternative A, which of course, like I say, you've got the description. This involves building a pond in the upper reach of the basin, installing 24 and 36-inch pipe downstream of Utes Street. This would potentially offset future downstream improvements. The cost of that's approximately 2.35. Option B would be to buy five affected homes, demolish structures, complete alternative 2A, and build a pond at the upper reach of the basin. That, that's kind of, like I say, towards the, towards interstate. We do kind of consider this the Cadillac option, probably the biggest benefit, it's also got the biggest cost, 3.39 million. And extras, and, which could be done to help the situation, although we don't feel these have as big an immediate impact as, as the items above, they total approximately 680,000, and that's largely upgrades to the other side of College. Like I say, we don't think that has the same impact. If you wanted to do all the projects together, obviously, you're looking at approximately $4 million for, for the whole enchilada. But like I say, I guess the project range, potentially from 900,000 to 3.39 million, for what I kind of consider the Cadillac of, of the College Street, that side of College Street improvements.
Okay.
Randy, which one of these fall within the consultant who, the consultant who came and presented? And his was a little, well, his estimate was $2 million, I know it changes.
It, it has gone up in regards to, I guess, potential property acquisition, things like that, like I say, actually considering buying some of the affected homes.
Okay.
I guess my biggest thing was, when they came over here, I never heard the word from them that we were gonna, one of the options was to demolish properties.
Or purchase profit, right?
What?
The purchase profit, sorry.
Purchase it and demolish it, we're not just going to take it.
Well, well, but still, buying it or whatever that case is, I personally feel like some of these people, not even talking to them today, but the reality is, a lot of these people that came to the, those town council meetings have lived there for generations after generations, and I think it's, I mean, it's like we're pushing to number one, do nothing, and do nothing is not an answer. Now, is option C the one option that doesn't make us get rid of any homes or purchase any homes, because it doesn't seem like it does?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, is that the option that we were given during that council meeting that involved...
That's essentially, essentially it, yes.
Okay.
And I'll tell you, I guess, like, oh, honesty, I, I'm probably as guilty as anybody for coming up with the idea of purchasing the homes. I did suggest it as, as an alternative to the engineering consultants. Oh, honesty, I think, just if you look at that basin, and long-term, just kind of, and the way it's just kind of naturally designed, that is the low point for a very large drainage basin. And it, it's type of thing, even if we did the, the full enchilada project, I couldn't necessarily guarantee those homes would flood, if they, if they were to occur, you know, 50-year storm, I think it would be a real possibility.
So option, option C, we, it's not a, it's not a pure cure?
I, I, I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it a 100% solution, and that, and that is, and that is kind of the danger of leaving the houses in the locations that are susceptible to flooding. Like I say, it's just kind of the nature of the basin. It is a large, very large drainage area, and just the way it, it funnels to it, if you have a very large downpour in a short time, that area's going to get a tremendous amount of water.
I guess my biggest concern too is, is the fact that we just passed, something came through to us months ago about allowing some more building to be done up the street. And in reality, that will be the land that we should be acquiring today to make sure that we make this stormwater ponds. There is another piece of land for sale up there, off of, that would be Main Street.
Yes.
That came out for sale. Will that be something, and it's very inexpensive, I mean, we're not talking about millions of dollars there.
We've spoken to that property owner, and he is agreeable to sell, and that property would be used under the option C.
Okay.
So these are options that you're...
Any of the, any of the upstream basins options would, would involve that property most likely.
Hey Randy, how many property owners, at least, have, have agreed, not, not officially or not in writing or legally, to give those easements out there if we did do option C?
Verbally, I think everyone in the channelway and upstream in the pond area, with the exception of one property owner in the channelway.
Which ends the whole project.
Well, it, it, you know, does council want to condemn a property for this project?
What's required of us as far as like going into the property, because I think a lot of the times, people are skeptical on saying yes when they don't have the facts. And I think just looking at this and not being a homeowner on that location scares me. This was the first time I've seen these options, and to me, this is unacceptable. Everything except letter option C, which I can tell you, those people are asking us for help, not asking us... us to come and buy their homes out for whatever amount, and kick them out of their homes.
We're not gonna make any decisions tonight, I assume we're still a year away at least from any type of?
I, I'd recommend, I guess, that you send it to Water and Waste Committee and have discussions at that level.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I recommend that.
Okay, well, that's Ms. Hicks and Mr. Wilson.
I would really like that, and I'd also like to see if we can make a meeting with the, with the homeowners, and have a, maybe a, you know, a roundtable meeting with them, maybe not even just one time, but several times, to discuss options, and obviously give them a copy of this, and say, hey, here is what we got, you gotta work with us, or we, we got nothing, because this should be a collaboration of everybody.
And I think when, anytime that you get into, and I've heard of situations like this before, if you're going to buy five pieces of property, I mean, it, it, it has to be all or none, so you can't get forward to say, yeah, I'll do it, and once they know, then we don't buy, because then you'll get into paying about five times more than the property's worth than the other people are getting, so, this is something we will pass on to, uh, Water and Waste, to, uh, to study over the next, I'd say probably gonna take a, well, we don't have final recommendations from anybody, do we?
No, we don't.
These are just options that we can pursue.
These are options, alternatives.
Just alternatives?
For discussion.
Have this presented to the homeowners?
No, this, this is the first time it's been presented publicly.
I appreciate that, you bringing it to us.
Yeah. And I'm sure our engineering people have looked into it?
Yeah, certainly.
So, they're involved along with consultants?
They're certainly involved.
Very good, anything else?
I guess, when is that meeting for, uh, the stormwater and the, the water?
I'll get with you and Mr. Wilson to try to set that, but hopefully, hopefully next week.
Randy, going through the committee, which then has to make a referral to council, which I'm sure it'll be weighed in and public hearings through there for council to make a decision, how long would something like this take, because I know we were pushing for a two year, uh, at least a two year window to where we, we start, start this project.
We would like to obviously seek grants for these, um, you know, there's resiliency grants that are out there, potentially for purchase of homes is, is one possibility, um, revenue sharing from VDOT, which is a fifty fifty grant for stormwater projects, is certainly another possibility, and if you can get fifty fifty money, or I think that resiliency money is even probably a higher percentage than that, I, I think we certainly, we should look at it. Uh, I would think that application process would take basically a year with formal design also, I would think you potentially start a project the year after that.
Okay, all right, so, but you need a decision from council before you start?
Yes, yes, we would, and direction, obviously, what, what, what direction are we gonna go as far as projects, yes.
Randy, a question for you, we wanted to put ARPA funds towards this project rate, how much was that total that we were looking at?
Total was three point one five million, we've spent just a very small amount of that, we definitely have over three million, um, we do have two year window to spend that.
Okay.
So, basically, this fiscal year and next fiscal year.
So, our decision, we have to decide what we're gonna do satisfactory to as many people as it can be satisfactory to, and then pursue, uh, the grant money?
Um, well, the, the ARPA money is really at council's discretion as to how, how you-
But you mentioned some grant money that we've been very successful in getting in the past.
Yes, we have been very successful at getting revenue sharing grant money from VDOT, um, you know, problem with VDOT application process is that you apply one money cycle, you might not be funded for several years potentially, just, just because the way their funding works. So, but that's something at least you would know, basically, the, the end of the funding cycle, when you get the approval, they tell you generally when you're gonna be scheduled.
Okay, and with the ARPA money, what's, what's their criteria for that?
It is eligible to use it for infrastructure projects such as water, sewer, and stormwater, they're, they're all eligible, um, other eligibility would include revenue loss from, from COVID would be a possibility, so you could simply kind of claim the money you did, like, like you did with CARES Act, I believe is a possibility, um, you can use it to pay emergency responders.
Right, but for this project, would we have to have it under contract, bid out, engineered, ready to go, uh, for us to be able to use that money, or can we just say, hey, this is what we want to use it for, and the federal government won't?
I think, I think you would have to have it expended within a two year period.
Means spent?
I think so.
Paying to the contractor?
I believe so.
Right, all right.
Okay.
Which, this project, let's say, council decided on one of these today, what's the shortest one? A year long project?
Let's say you were to, to decide on this project and forego a, a, a grant, which I, I don't think you do, but if you were to do that, you know, you, you might be starting construction next fiscal year potentially, with, with-
So, there's a risk that if we started too late, it goes too long, that we may not be able to use ARPA money at all for it?
It, it's correct, yes, that, that is a possibility.
Okay.
Like I say, you've got to use it within that two, two year window.
Right, but you just can't say this is what we're gonna do with it, and they just, okay, you just keep that as long as you want, because you said you're gonna use this for this.
Unless there's some type of extension or something like that, like there was with CARES Act money.
I think we're definitely farther down the road than we were six months ago, I mean, six months ago, we're just talking about, you know, even a year ago, we were dealing with the flooding issue, and then obviously, fix a problem, there is not a fix unless we spend money, and I think it's our responsibility as a town to take care of this problem, because we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be waiting for another storm to happen, to tell these homeowners, well, we are waiting for money from VDOT, so, if there was an incident today, I want to make sure that they are taking care of at least the best that we can.
I think we, we, we've got, until you have it contracted out and they start doing, uh, churning dirt, I, I don't count on anything, um, and that's what, and me as a resident, if this project was in my neighborhood, we can do all the talking we want, this thing could be still two, three, four years out, and we could still, a new council could be under the, the decision making, if we don't get the certain grants or have the certain funds we want for it.
I'll point out, we did use a thirty percent contingency in these estimates, which is definitely a little bit of high, that's a little higher than we typically use.
She gave us about a two year window on it, right?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, just to point out, I think Andrew passed out the updated boards and commissions list for you, that is basically to replace the handout from last council meeting, uh, one thing I'll point out, like I say, we did update it for some of the appointments from the last committee, and there are a few corrections to that sheet, so if you could just toss that one in, the updated sheet should be correct.
And I appreciate you, Deanna.
Sure. It's nice to have, and it'll be nice to have going forward. Uh, and I'll just bring up park naming, uh, it's something that council needs to consider, how you would want to handle it, um, you know, you could come up with a park name potentially yourselves, and obviously, there's potential for sponsor name with it, um, you know, we've sort of been using Christiansburg Signature Park, but what, what you really want to call it is up to town council, or if you would want to form a committee for that consideration, you could, if you would want to refer to Parks and Rec Commission, you could, if you want it to be a council decision, that's fine, but just if you could maybe give us a direction of how you'd want to handle that.
I thought we were waiting on sponsors, and hopefully somebody will pay some money to have their name on it or something.
As far as a title sponsor, a corporate sponsor, yes, but do you want a name with it like Christiansburg Signature Park? You know, uh, I guess, just to give you an example, ABC Corporation Christiansburg Signature Park.
I think I'm more concerned about the money now than actually putting a name tag on it, that's my personal opinion.
I think when we enter into the discussion about, when we get to the point of naming a park, I think I would, I would suggest we turn it over to the Recreation Committee to, uh, come with, come forward with suggested names, and then, of course, the final naming will be council's vote.
I think a sponsor sounds better.
Well, we can still have a sponsor out there.
Good.
Do we have anything out there requesting sponsorships for anything regarding the park governing?
Not distributed, no, just, just materials we showed you, a couple of council-
I personally feel like we have been asking for this for a while, and, and-
Well, I think a lot of people that are gonna consider into it or want to see closer to, I, I'm not gonna say a finished open product, but they wanna, they wanna see the progress and make sure they're contributing not to a pig in the po, but they're actually gonna, if they want to buy a lighted field or whatever, they want to see pretty close to where it's gonna be.
I think right now, the way it's looking, it's looking pretty well, as far as, and we have all the drawings, and we have all kinds of stuff about the park online and everywhere, we had a really nice video that was made, so, I personally feel that it's better to start right now, trying to get to the sponsors, um, to see we get a bite, you know, let's say, we, we get two million dollars or five million dollars.
Can we get an update from Brad, because he's the one who's taking this project under his wing, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good.
My, my, if you just want a park name, which is, when's the deadline for, that we should have one?
I, I guess that's really up to council, because, you know, obviously, things like signage would depend on that though, so you might not have a sign with a, you know, whatever name is chosen, if you're looking at opening date, but if you're, if you're comfortable with that, that's okay, it's, like I say, really at council's discretion.
Oh, you can turn it over to the rec commission to present several names, but I, I would like this to be a community involvement where they vote on that, but that's just my-
And they could, they have that document out there that, with the rec commission that they can solicit input, public input, okay, what else you got?
That's all I've got.
Reid? Uh, Mr. Attorney?
No, thank you, ma'am.
Any other staff? Council reports, Mr. Showalter?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Bishop?
I don't have any.
Uh, Ms. Hicks?
Yes, uh, just a reminder to everyone, tomorrow is Central Business District Meeting at twelve o'clock, from twelve to one, we had a town hall, um, the public should be, you know, welcome to, to come, and, uh, public comments are always welcome, um, also, uh, I guess you guys got the email, uh, and Brandy replied saying, for the agency of aging, we're gonna have, uh, they're gonna have, uh, nice PowerPoint and stuff like that, telling us a little bit about the organization and everything for February the twenty second, town council.
That is a ten minute limit, is that correct?
Yeah, they, they have an under ten minutes.
Okay, very good.
Joanna, is this gonna be on, online, uh, video or anything?
Uh, the person is gonna be coming over there.
You're, you're, uh, sorry, Central Business.
No, it's gonna be in person, town hall.
Very good. Ms. Hockett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing.
Well, I am pleased to announce that the, uh, Virginia, the, uh, Virginia Board of Elections complaint that was filed on me by Mrs. Hicks was dismissed, uh, because I had proven that I had done everything that I was supposed to do, and I have a letter from the newspaper that said, yeah, he screwed, that they screwed it up, not me, so it was dismissed this past week. Other business?
No.
We have none, then?
No other business.
There you go.
I moved it to town, council enter into closed meeting as stipulated in agenda, free the agenda, uh, request for a closed meeting under code of Virginia two point two dash three seven one one A seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, for the purposes of the subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened, or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. The closed meeting is being held for discussion of pending litigation filed by Allegheny Construction Company, Inc., against the town, uh, and the town, and by the town against McCormick Taylor Incorporated.
That's a motion?
That is a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in the second, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, that is six oh, we'll take a brief recess until we can get council, uh, chambers cleared.
Aye.
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 We are back in open session, Mr. Showalter, you have the certification?
Yep, I move to certify that the town, council of the town of Christiansburg meeting in closed meeting, in the best of each member's knowledge, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting.
Motion in the second, Madam Clerk?
Aye.
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 That is, that is now six oh, it was five and a half until I called, okay, then we were out of, we're out of closed session, we've confirmed, certified, we've not discussed this, to the best of our knowledge, council will not take any actions on this at this time, is there anything else to come before council?
I really like to, um, try to make sure that we do something about, trying to see we can get more employees to work for the town, public works, among other items.
Most likely to come up at a budget session, because I think we have to take a real hard look at salaries, and I've been working-
Can we look into, trying to see if we can come out with a day so we can have a, a work session with the new council and everything, so we can start talking about this, I mean-
Actually, Val and I were talking about maybe trying to do the finance meeting, uh, first, uh, we're actually looking, finance committee maybe on February the seventh, I think, we'll look at the finance, but we wanted first, first meeting to be the finance committee.
I mean, thirty six, um, that being down, thirty six public works employees this last winter storm, it's something we shouldn't be dealing with, and those guys are working their tails off, and we truly appreciate it, if they're listening today, very grateful for their service.
I think so too, but I think, you know, the fact of the matter is, we try hard to get people, before we have our difficulties getting people off their butts and want to give up the government subsidies and go back to work, so, nothing else? I'm sorry, go ahead, you, you were in motion.
I just wanted to mention something, Joanna, uh, so, you know, unfortunately, a very sad occasion, my brother-in-law's mother passed, and it's the first, first real funeral I've been into in years where the casket is actually taken from, uh, from the church, uh, to, to cemetery, and this was all within town, and I just, um, uh, his family, and also, and me and my family, uh, it was, we were very impressed with the candor of the town police officers who closed the roads, and they stood at ease, uh, um, when we drove by, but, one of the main things, these, these public works guys, they were out clearing the sidewalks down in front of the food line, uh, which is right next to the rec center, and when we were driving by there, and of course, I was just in the back of the, um, the convoy of sorts, uh, going out there, they didn't have to do this, okay, um, but these guys who were doing real hard labor, all right, hats off, facing, uh, the hearse as it drove by, very respectful, and that meant a lot, um, to this family, uh, that came from everywhere in the state of Virginia, and, and that was actually talked about after, after the, the, you know, after, um, the funeral was completed, how impressed they were with town staff, and the respect that they showed to, to our citizens, so, I just wanted to pass that along, I, I, I thought that was incredible, so, pass that along to everyone.
Thank you, Henry. We're adjourned again.